Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education's Business Meeting this Wednesday, April 23rd. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge. This evening, we have the privilege of recognizing some of our talented, many talented students here in Brentwood. Londa?
Yes, hi. Good evening. So tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring some truly exceptional student athletes. Young people who have not only broken records, but made history right here in Brentwood. Their accomplishments are a testament to hard work, perseverance, and incredible potential of our Brentwood students. They are powerful reminders that our students are capable of achieving anything they set their minds to. First, let's start with Nilson Juarez. Are you here, Nilson? Nilson may weights in the pool as part of the record-breaking 200 medley relay team in boys swimming, showing incredible strength, speed, and teamwork. His accomplishment speaks to what can happen when talent meets education and trust in one another. Nilson's success in the water reminds us of the power of working together to achieve something great. He plans to attend Suffolk Community College, followed by Stony Brook University, where he plans to study biology, and we can't wait to see what he will accomplish next. Congratulations.
Nilson, can you come up? Can you come up, please? We have a certificate for Nilson that reads, "In recognition of your dedication, teamwork, and outstanding participation in the boys' swimming 200 medley relay, your commitment to excellence and sportsmanship has brought pride to our team and the school community." Congratulations.
So just here. Right there. Very good. Perfect. Justin Limas. Are you here, Justin? Justin? Okay, stand up, Justin. Justin earned the title of Boys Badminton Singles Record Holder, an achievement that reflects his precision, strategic thinking, and determination on the court. By doing so, he made his mark on school history and proved that with focus and effort, anything is possible. While Justin Lim is still exploring his options for college and career, we are proud to let you know that he's excellent in college calculus. So I think that he wants to be a math teacher. That's what I'm trying to do. Trying to do that. So we know that he's going to do great things. Congratulations, Justin.
Justin Limas, in recognition of your exceptional talent, dedication, and perseverance, we celebrate you as the Boys Badminton Singles Record Holder. Your hard work and competitive spirit have set a new standard of excellence on and off the court. Congratulations on this outstanding accomplishment.
Now, we have Adrian Peña and Tevin Savala. Adrian Peña and Tevin Savala team up to become the new Boys Badminton Doubles Record Holders, a testament to their strong partnership, skill, and perseverance. Their record-breaking success reflects the strength of collaboration, trust, and the drive to rise above even the toughest competition. Tevin plans to attend Mercy University, where he will pursue a degree in exercise science and then enroll in medical school. We will have a doctor. Adrian plans to attend Suffolk Community College and pursue a career in science education, and we are proud to say that we have a future science teacher here. Now, we have Angelo Feliciano.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tevin Savala, Adrian Peña, in recognition of your dedication, exceptional skill, and exemplary sportsmanship, we celebrate you as the Boys Badminton Doubles and Record Holder. Your hard work and competitive spirit have set a new standard of excellence on and off the court. Congratulations on this astounding accomplishment.
Now, we have Angelo Feliciano. Angelo Feliciano set a new school record in the 1,000-meter run for boys varsity track, demonstrating both incredible endurance and determination. By breaking this record, Angelo has pushed the boundaries of what was previously thought possible, setting a new bar for future runners to chase. He has committed to Central Connecticut State University, where he will compete at the Division One level, the highest level of college athletics. Angelo will also run cross-country and track and plans to study law. A lawyer. We also celebrate each of these seniors and their wonderful coaches, Judy Daniels. Judy, are you here? Judy? Judy? Stand up. Allison DeFalcone, Blake Crespo, and Andrea Di Maria. If you're here, please stand up.
In recognition, Angelo Feliciano, in recognition of your outstanding athletic achievement and unwavering dedication, we proudly recognize your remarkable performance in breaking the school record in the 1,000-meter run. Your hard work, perseverance, and competitive spirit have set a new standard of excellence. Congratulations on this outstanding accomplishment. Londa, will they go on a wall? Is Kevin here? Kevin O'Reilly? Mr. O'Reilly, will the record breakers be reflected somewhere within the walls of Brentwood?
Yes, we're gonna, at the high school, on the TVs, we have, I love the guy, Matt, he has pictures. So we're gonna do a loop of everything, of video screens.
Okay. But will we memorialize it somehow, like on a wall, on a plaque? Will we do anything like that?
Like a banner or stuff like that? Yeah, we'll probably look into something like that for them.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, I think sorting things on a record board, right, that you did before. Yeah, badminton, since it's a fairly new sport, we have to do banners for them.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have, next up are our student liaisons, Farah Alzafarani and Samuel Hasfaw.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's doing great this evening, this Wednesday, a little change. So I'm gonna talk about some of the things going on, and so first off, we'll go before the break. We're gonna do, we had the Spanish play, which was an amazing play. I'm glad I was there to take it. It was a beautiful play. They're great actors. We had the breast cancer walk, which was also before the break. That was the weekend before our break started. So much people came. It was a beautiful event, and I was glad to be there as well. Beautiful event. So many people were there. And we had, we had our students wear purple for Military Children Day, which was, I believe, the Friday. So kids came to school wearing purple in recognition of any children that had parents in the military. This week, we had Earth Day. So we had students come to school wearing green to represent Earth Day, and of course, it's Brentwood's colors, so yeah. And we, this weekend, we have the autism walk, so I hope we have a great showing for that. I'll be there. And today, we had our JROTC unit assessment. So we had our ROTC students show, show an inspector from the state what ROTC does, what we do, and how we run things in the high school. And I think he had a very great impression on us, and I'm glad to do our, we did our presentations, and we did very well, so I'm glad to do that.
Hi, guys. My name is Farah. So I have some updates about the senior class. So the senior class is actually having a Chipotle fundraiser, and we're currently selling prom tickets. But for the Chipotle fundraiser, it's gonna be this Saturday, April 26th. So the proceeds will actually go to senior scholarships, so that's pretty cool. And then we also did something called superlatives. So we voted on like the most likely to be late to graduation, or the best car, or the class clown, and then we made like crowns for them, and we took pictures and certificates. So it's like a nice way to end the year. We also are planning to have a talent show at the high school on May 9th, and that's it for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to begin questions on agenda items only. I'm sorry? No, no. It's okay. Yeah, I think so. Certifications, Mr. Bill Moss. We are allowing three minutes for you, Mr. Moss.
Sure. So my questions are about D1A on the agenda.
D1A?
My first question is about the probationary contracts. Has the Board of Education seen proof of certification of number one and number two?
Policy 9240, as always, is what we abide by. The superintendent vets every candidate to make sure that the certifications are appropriate.
I will remind the Board of Education that you are liable, criminally liable. It is a misdemeanor for you to vote on any person who you do not know is certified and qualified to teach. So if you have not seen that certification and you're voting, you are knowingly, potentially committing a crime. So I'm here to let you know that because I have certainly observed that behavior of the Board of Education in the past five years. My second question is about the reclassification to teacher. Was this individual number four a teacher in the district prior to this reclassification?
She was guidance counselor.
She was a guidance counselor before? So she's going back to guidance?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Any other questions from the audience regarding agenda items only? You have three minutes, Ms. Flores.
Thank you. My name is Anna. Can you speak more to agenda item B2J? And then explain policy 4321 under B2P.
Londa, would you speak to B2J, please? Thank you so much.
So B2J is our federal flow through alloc-
So B2J is our federal flow through allocation funds. So basically, we get two grants from the federal government, the 611 and the 619. And the 611 grant is for students three through 21. The 619 only pertains to students, you know, at the, up to the kindergarten level. So basically, those funds, they, we have kids that go to schools in other locations, but they're district residents. So there's a process in place where those districts where they go to school at, they provide the services, but they build the district for the services and then we pay them. So when we get all the forms, we actually put it on the board for approval, and then we release the money to the school districts.
What was the second one?
Under B2P, Policy 4321-12.
Dr. Leoni, would you like to speak to that, please?
Sure. Good evening. So Policy 4321.12 is use of physical restraint and timeout. So that policy was updated. There were updates to staff training requirements in alignment with State Education Department regulations. And we also had to remove the word room in the timeout nomenclature. So it was formerly known as a timeout room, but State Education Department required that word room to be taken out of the nomenclature throughout the policy. So changes to staff training requirements to align with State Ed regulations, and removing that word room from timeout room throughout the policy. Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Leoni. From the audience regarding agenda items only.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, of course you can.
So for B2G and B2H, it's page four. Affiliation agreement with Adelphi University and an agreement with Queens College. From what I'm understanding, is this just a student teaching agreement? So it's, it's very casual to have? Okay. And I, you know, I do remember I was also going to ask about that policy, so, you know, thank you. But I did want to kind of focus on, make sure that the community is aware, you know, talking to Dr. Leoni and the committee about our policies and the impact they have. And, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of wordplay and fixing it to be in lines with the law. So thank you. And, you know, we're gonna talk further, but all of our policies, if anybody ever has questions, Dr. Leoni is very accessible to reach, and we do value your input on anything that you see. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else? Agenda items only? Okay. Be resolved that the following items be approved, B1A through B1M. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Aileen Harmon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes, abstentions, so moved. Be resolved that the following items be approved, B2A through B2U. I need a motion.
Sorry, motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Be resolved that the following items be approved, C1A and C1B. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1A, appointments, resignations, and leaves. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Certified Personnel Action Report contained in the board packet for the April 23rd, 2025 board meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1B, appointments, resignations, and leaves, non-certificated personnel. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Non-Certificated Personnel Action Report contained in the board packet for the April 23rd, 2025 board meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1, sorry. D1C is moving. Oh, sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you, okay. D1D, recommended budget for 2025-2026 school year. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education approves and adopts and the proposed 2025-2026 budget in the amount of $688,525,221, with a tax levy of $115,501,607, which does not exceed the statutory tax levy cap. And be it further resolved that the district clerk is directed to include the adopted budget amount in the legal notice and in a proposition for the annual election budget vote to be held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. I need a, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Aileen Harmon, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Safari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. D1E, Superintendent's Hearing and Appeal. Whereas the parent of the student referenced in correspondence has appealed to the Board of Education regarding the Superintendent's determination, and whereas the Board has carefully reviewed the record on appeal, and whereas the Board, the Board has deliberated on the appeal in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board shall affirm the Superintendent's determination. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Brandon Garcia, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstention, so moved.
D1F, Administrative Table of Organization Coordinator of Health, Recreation, K-12, Physical Education, and Athletics. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Stephen Davis to a four-year probationary period as Coordinator of Health, Recreation, K-12, Physical Education, and Athletics effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029, at a salary set forth in the negotiated agreement between the Brentwood Union Free School District and the Brentwood Principals and Supervisors Organization, PIPSO. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cindy Safari, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Brandon Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstentions, so moved. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. Welcome to Brentwood. So we're excited to have you as part of the Brentwood family, so welcome. Okay. E1A, Student Enrollment Figures. In March, as of February 28th, we had a total enrollment of 17,835. And at the end of March, we had 17,816 students. Special education enrollment figures, elementary, 1,446; middle school, 645; freshman campus, 200; high school, 601; attending added district schools, K-12, 476; resource room-related services, district residents only, 55; approved preschool programs, 481; and related services preschool programs, 227. F1 through 8 are miscellaneous items for information only. Board action memos of the March 11th, 2025 BOE special meeting, the Fourth Budget Workshop, and the March 20th BOE business meeting. We have the Principal's Report, Secondary Leadership Team Meeting Minutes of March 20th, Elementary Leadership Team Meeting Minutes of March 7th. And the following policies, regulations are being presented to the Board of Education for information only. So that means when we say information only, that just means that they're pending review, pending changes. So they have not been approved by the Board yet. There's a policy committee that is chaired by Ms. Cindy Safari, that has Dr. Leoni, one of our well-regarded experts in the field, working on updating said policies. And so Policy 1250, Admission of Senior Citizens to District Sponsored Events. 1400, Public Complaints. 1800, Donations, Gifts, and Grants to the District. 2245, Ex-Official Student Member of the Board. 4300, Curriculum Development. 5300.45, Code of Conduct or Alternative Instruction, sorry. Policy 5711, Dignity for All Students Act, DASSA. 8330, Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials and Equipment. And Policy 9240, Recruiting and Hiring Employees. Budget Hearing and Board of Education Workshop, May 8th, that's coming up. The Budget and Candidate Vote on May 20th, 2025. And the Board of Education Business Meeting on May 21st, 2025. We will now open the floor up for 30 minutes for public comment. Each individual at the microphone will have three minutes. Okay, Mr. Moss. Thank you.
My name is William Moss, I am a parent in the district. I'm also a former teacher, mathematics teacher in the district. I was a member of the Brentwood Teachers Association for 11 years. I am here to speak on behalf of Ms. Ronda Young and the situation that has been filed in federal court. I've read the complaint, I'm very disturbed by what I read in that complaint. What is missing for me in the whole scenario, and all of you know that I'm pretty ears to the ground for the Brentwood School District. What I'm missing is what happens with other people. I didn't hear about any kind of reassignment to home pending investigation. It was on the news, our superintendent went on the news and said that there was a thorough investigation into the situation. I did not hear from a single person, not a friend of mine who works in the district, not a family member, my one and only, my sister, working in the district. No one said to me that we heard about the president of the Teachers Association being reassigned to home while an investigation was going on. I'm having a problem reconciling having integrity of an investigation when the person who was the alleged, in my opinion, it's a physical assault that was in the complaint, spit hitting saliva hitting a person's face is pretty bad. So I don't understand why I did not hear about that happening. I read in the newspaper, the high school principal was reassigned to home pending investigation.
One minute left, sir.
I read also in the newspaper, we saw on the news, that there was a teacher who was accused of a sexual crime, who was reassigned to home pending investigation. If something disregret just happened, or was alleged to have happened, why is, wasn't that person reassigned to home? And how do you protect the integrity of an investigation when you don't do that? And that person is present in the district, able to retaliate against that individual, able to mess with witnesses, the whole nine yards, if they're still here and present? They should have, that individual should have been reassigned to home so that a clear investigation could be accomplished. And I say it was a dirty investigation because that individual was not reassigned to home. And if you all are doing good business and are truly standing up for this community, then you have to stand strong, and you have to make sure that you say to that individual...
Time is up, sir.
I'm sorry, but you have to get the same treatment as everyone else.
Thank you for your perspective, Mr. Moss. Thank you so much. Okay, we have Bishop Donald Hudson. Would you like some water, Bishop Hudson?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's been a long time since I've been in front of you, but about 25 years had to come at different times to address different things. And the issue of Ms. Young has come across our desk. And I have really two questions. One, I was told there was an internal or complete investigation done, and there was no finding. My question is, was there external investigation done to make sure that there's equity and justice for her?
Mr. Hudson?
Bishop Hudson.
Bishop Hudson, excuse me, Bishop Hudson. I believe you said you had two questions, and I know that there's only three minutes per speaker, so I wanted you to have an opportunity to ask your second question before the time runs out.
Okay, well, actually, it's, it's, it's one question. Was there an internal and was there an external investigation done?
I can say that an investigation was done. We're not at liberty to disclose more than that. This is pending litigation at this point. As Mr. Moss had just mentioned, something has been filed in court, and we're going to let the court process play out. It is not specific to this case. We don't ever discuss pending litigation. We're confident that the district acted appropriately, and we're sure that the courts will make a determination that we believe is correct.
All right, and I'll close by saying this. As a son of the Church of God in Christ, there's an instrument we have in place called a judiciary board. If there's a grievance that happens internally, we try to make sure it's resolved so that there's peace, equity, and justice. And in the Church of God in Christ, there have been times where people could not find justice. So they had to go outside into the federal courts to find equity and justice. I think it's a very sad look at us that, that she would have to even file a federal court lawsuit to find equity and justice. And I'm hoping and praying that everyone that sees this understands that everyone is looking at us again, and the, and the question will be, are we really about taking care of the people? Dr. King said it this way, injustice for anyone, anywhere, is injustice for everyone. And my prayer is that there is true equity and justice for her, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop Hudson, for your perspective as well. Mr. Fritz.
Joe Fritz, Brentwood resident. I'm speaking this evening to inquire the status of the driver's education program for students at Brentwood High School. I request that we consider this program to make it easier for all students to participate in driver's education. It's a program that the former superintendent was considering, and I know how useful it was for myself when I took driver's ed as a high school student at Brentwood schools. It provided me with an opportunity to reduce my insurance. It provided me with an opportunity to work and pay for my expenses. It will give students a leg up and make the transition easier for students. Mr. Loeschner said that no teacher was qualified to teach driver's education. As far as I'm concerned, this is not a proper reason to deny our students the opportunity to get ahead in their goals and get it as part of the school learning process. I'm very grateful we had a driver's education at Brentwood in 1962. And the program included book learning and the use of a vehicle to hone one's driving skills. I asked that the, the school board to inform us as to what the status of it is. This was brought up about a year and a half ago. And, you know, I know that other things have happened, but at the same time, I think this is an opportunity for all of Brentwood's... students to, in effect, get ahead as part of their learning process in the Brentwood school system. And using the excuse that we have no one qualified, when all you have to do is to put an add-on for the learning process, and you would probably get twenty individuals who are capable of teaching driver's ed. The only thing I can say is, if not when, when? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. There was actually continuous conversation, follow-up to what Mr. Lochner had said, and I believe at that point, the answer was, we would not be moving forward with the driver's ed because the insurance is cost prohibitive to the district, that in actuality, it would be cheaper for the parents to find an establishment like Precision that's down the road. It would be cheaper for them to go that route. We would have to literally charge our parents probably more than seven hundred dollars just for the class, and that's cost prohibitive to, I believe, our parents. And if Ms. Stacy O'Connell would like to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to add is, my kids went through driver's ed, you know, five, six, seven years ago or so. It no longer lowers your insurance. The only way to lower insurance is to take that defensive driving class, which is, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty-five dollars online, so that's a lot more...
A hundred.
Is it up to a hundred?
It's up to a hundred dollars.
There are some organizations that do it a little cheaper. But what driver's ed does allow is it allows the kids to drive at age seventeen, which I know can help the parent, but it's also, there are some inherent risks in that for the families as well. But just so you know, it does not lower the insurance, and it was very cost prohibitive.
If you would incorporate that four-hour class in the school...
Mr. Fritz, please, please come back to the mic. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
It would, I mean, that's, using the cost effectiveness is extremely important because it was fine when I took it, and I got the driver's education and the learning, and I agree with you, you put a four-hour course within the framework of the course itself, and you'll get the reduction of insurance. So that's not, you know, that's the way I would look at solving the problem as opposed to addressing it in a way to discourage individuals to utilize the school district as a frame of reference to enhance their education. It's extremely important. We really can't use it as an excuse because we have seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand students, and you do get your driver's license a little earlier, and it permits you to take your test. I took the test. As a result, I got my driver's license. It also taught me formal skills to become a better driver, because it was a six-month or a year program.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I suggest we readdress this and not rely upon what Mr. Lochner has said, because I think that it's worthwhile for us to reconsider.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fritz.
Thank you.
Mr. Fritz, hi. I just want to let you know that Mr. Chang actually looked into this also, and being that we didn't have the funds, right, to bring and buy all the cars and have the space to do that here, he's looking into buying a simulation machine that looks like a video game for students to use, that, believe it or not, in some classrooms. We don't know yet if this will be held of physical education, but he has looked into that, and some school districts are doing the same thing, so they can actually practice. It looks like a video game, so we are looking into that, so we didn't just stop.
It's a start.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Dr.
Any other questions from the audience? Only one time, sorry. That's what we're doing now. I mentioned it at the beginning. You have one opportunity, three minutes a person. Anyone else in the audience?
Anybody want to give him that three minutes?
We're not doing that. Okay. I have a question from the community. I have seen some talk on social media regarding lawsuits against the Brentwood School District. My first question is, how many lawsuits has Mr. Moss lodged against the Brentwood School District? Over two dozen? Okay. All right, all the new business, Wanda?
Something different now. I am planning to show you some pictures of the highlights. Here. I like to do this so the audience... Okay, so we have some lovely highlights here. I know that Sammy...
Hold on, I'm sorry, I have another question. How many of those lawsuits did Mr. Moss lodge have found in his favor, and what have these lawsuits cost the taxpayers of Brentwood?
So I don't have all of the information in front of me, and certainly, my law firm is not the only law firm that has handled litigation that has been brought by Mr. Moss, so I can only speak for what my firm has handled, but I cannot recall any litigation that he has filed against the district that my law firm has handled and which Mr. Moss has been successful.
That's untrue.
And which have you been successful, Mr. Moss?
The certification. The certification of teachers.
I don't know if you're referring to something that I handled, or perhaps labor counsel or outside counsel, so that is why I'm being very specific about what I respond to.
The committee was on it.
Okay, well, we'll look into that, Mr. Moss. I can tell you that, sitting here, I'm not aware of it.
The commissioner admonished the Board of Education for not hiring people...
That wasn't, the commissioner admonishing someone is not a win for you, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, it's to me.
Well, we can all want a win, and that's nice, but it's what the commissioner decides that ultimately matters.
Yeah, the commissioner admonished you.
Okay, it wasn't a decision in your favor, Mr. Moss. It says right up front in the first paragraph of the decision, who won and who lost. I'm in the win category. So let's move on to the other litigation that's been handled. As far as labor counsel and outside counsel appointed by Nicer, the school's insurance company, I cannot speak to all of those decisions because I did not personally handle that litigation. In terms of funds that have been used by the district to defend itself against litigation brought by Mr. Moss, I have the numbers that I have compiled from my firm, and I believe that numbers have also been requested from labor counsel and from other lawyers who have handled cases, and I believe the estimate at this point is over half a million dollars over the course of the past several years, in terms of the district defending claims and processing FOIL requests made by Mr. Moss.
Can I ask you a question? You can come to the microphone.
I hope you're prepared to answer questions about every other person, too, because you just opened a huge door by answering questions about me on this floor. I'm a parent in this district.
Please proceed.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nigeria Young. I have a question, because I do intern in the district, and I've also, I'm an alumni at Brentwood. I do notice that there's not a lot of black and brown teachers in the district, so I wanted to know, the accused person, Mr. Kevin Coyne, the person being accused of racism and discrimination, what participation does he have in the hiring of teachers in this district? It is a minority district that's lacking, you know, black and brown teachers and other professionals, social workers. What type of participation does he have in the hiring of teachers for our community?
Follow our policy, and we have a BTA member in each interview that we have. There is nothing that he's doing to impede in the hiring, you know, of teachers. We have members. We have members, right? He will assign a BTA member.
So, is he involved in the process of hiring a Brentwood teacher?
No.
Okay, because that's my concern, because if he is racist, you know, that, to me, that's concerning, that he's the one who has a part in the hiring of the teachers for the district.
Keep in mind that when you will see the policy, they, all candidates, come to the assistant superintendent, and they decide, right, who they are going to recommend to me, and then I will recommend to the Board of Education. That's the way that it works.
Is there a reason why there's not a lot of black teachers, Hispanic teachers, in the district?
We do hire teachers, right? If you want to have a diverse pool of teachers, if we have them, trust me, we are going to hire teachers. We have a significant number of bilingual teachers, and it hasn't been easy to also get them, because we have bilingual programs, and as you know, we have eighty-seven percent of our students is Hispanic, and we have a bilingual program here also. It has been very difficult to find them as well, and each time that we can find diverse candidates, trust me, they are hired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening, my name is Anna. So if there has been that much money gone to litigation, what has the board or the district done to make sure that those lawsuits don't get to the litigation piece, or at least create some sort of conversation, right, like bring people to the table, have some sort of agreement, some sort of compromise, some sort of a conversation, so that we don't get to that point, right? Like, how have we made inclusive decisions so that there isn't this back and forth of lawsuits that honestly shouldn't be? That is a waste of taxpayer money.
Well, we can't stop anyone from litigating the district.
No, that's not my question, right? Like, what has the board done to be able to have good conversations so that they don't get to that point?
Well, we have engaged in conversation. Whether other individuals like the outcome of those conversations is another matter. I mean, you know, that's the reality of the situation. You know, we're not going to be strong-armed as a board into making decisions based on one person's opinion or perception of the situation, so this board is always open to dialogue. If anyone, we always say, we put our cell phone number out there, our email address, people approach us at any point in time. The superintendent's door is always open. There's never an avenue where someone cannot reach out to us to have a conversation. That doesn't mean that, you know, it, listen, we have to be able to agree to disagree, and that's the truth of it. And sometimes when people don't like to disagree, litigation happens, and that's just an unfortunate part of life.
So wouldn't that be an okay thing also, too, to have that litigation if there isn't an agreement? Agree to disagree is a good thing, right? But it's, people should also have the freedom to be able to do that as well, right?
That's exactly what I said in the beginning of my statement.
Okay, okay. Because it seems like there is a really pretentious, right, like, relationship here that shouldn't be as well.
That's a matter of opinion.
I just hope that the board is able to create a better, right, like, relationship so that they don't get to that point, because, you know, it's my taxpayer money that's going towards that.
Agreed.
Mine too. So protect our women.
Do better!
Protect our women.
Okay, we're going to, any other questions or statements from the community? Are we good on time, Dennis? Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions from the audience?
I don't think my three minutes are up. Are they, Mr. Lewis?
Okay, continue. Thank you.
So my ask, right, like, is to make sure to be able to make better communication, better relationships with community members, right? Like, I would wish that these meetings were, you know, to be able to just have constructive conversation around the children, and it seems like it's feared off, right? So I would, I would want, right, like, there to be a good sense of understanding and not this sort of pretentious sort of meeting where there's back and forth. Thank you.
And we totally agree with you. We totally agree with you that there should be a meeting of the minds, but unfortunately, that doesn't happen, and we can agree to disagree, and that's, you know, that's the nature of the world. We don't live in a world where everyone's going to disagree. Listen, we can disagree without being disagreeable, right? That's what it is. That's what makes the world go round, the difference of opinion. We can all respect one another for that. But, you know, if you don't, you know, do what somebody says, then it's an issue? No. We have ideas and opinions, too. Does it make it wrong just because we're called the Board of Education? We're not allowed to have an opinion or a viewpoint? The community likes to tell us all the time that we put you in those seats, right? You charge us with making the hard decisions, and maybe you don't agree with our decisions, but I would like to think that ninety percent of the time, that someone who's on your side, where you're standing right now, if you were sitting in our seats, you probably ninety percent of the time, maybe even more than that, would make the exact same decisions we're making. Why? Because you...
Delphal.
That's a matter of opinion. That's a matter of opinion. Again, a matter of opinion. It's a matter of opinion. We can agree to disagree. We can agree to disagree, Anna. And, you know what, we've opened our doors here. We've always said, come. You know what? And you have witnessed it yourself. How many people come to our board meetings?
Can you explain...
I'm asking you a question. You're asking me a question, right? I'm asking you a question. We've opened our doors. We advertise our budget meetings, which are probably the most important meetings that we have, where all the decision about programs that are taking place and being implemented for our students, right? We're talking about, everybody's talking about taxpayer dollars, right? That's where your taxpayer dollars are being spent. That's where all the really hard decisions are being made. Yes, our public meetings, we're approving contracts, right? We're hiring people. Yeah, but answer me that question, please. When you come here to a public meeting to discuss these items, how many people are sitting in that audience?
Enough to know the truth.
No, I'm asking a question, right? I'm being respectful. You're asking me a question. I'm asking you a question. Can you please answer? You've been here. Herman, Herman, it's not mine. Her time stopped. Her time, let's explain how the rules go. When somebody's at the mic, when somebody's at the...
Okay, may I clarify something? When the board is responding to the speaker, the three minutes gets turned off. So the speaker gets three minutes to speak total without the response time. The response time is charged to the board. So Anna has actually spoken at this point for two minutes and fourteen seconds.
And she's spoken twice when Billy Moss was only...
She was allowed to speak on agenda items.
No, she spoke for agenda items.
We'll go up to the mic. I'll tell you that right now.
She spoke for agenda items, which she was entitled to, and this is a separate matter.
Don't worry about who's talking. You'll know who's talking in the mic.
So... So the most important conversations, where we're opening our doors and saying, come and have conversation with us, where's the audience? You've asked me that question. You said I had seven hundred and ninety-two votes when I was elected last May. Where's everyone? That was your response. So I ask you.
Can you explain to me what you meant when you said that you don't want to be stronghold into making decisions that you don't want to make?
Well, I don't want to be threatened to make a decision or be threatened with litigation. That's what I'm saying.
So you're saying that there was a threat of litigation, and you didn't want to be stronghold to being able to...
I already said what I said. I said, I don't want to have a conversation with someone, and if I don't make a decision they deemed the right decision, to be told, I'll litigate you. I'll litigate the district if you don't follow X, Y, and Z.
But the point is that you didn't want to have that conversation because you don't want to be stronghold into whatever decision.
No, that's not what I said. That's not what I said. I already said I...
Can you clarify?
I answered your question. Do you have another question, Anna?
Can you clarify?
I already did.
I didn't understand. Can you clarify?
When we're opening up a conversation with someone, if someone says, I would like to sit down with you, right, and we're having a conversation, and because I don't see matters the same way as that particular individual, for at the end of the conversation or at the beginning, to be told, if you don't see things my way, I will seek litigation. That's what I'm saying. That's the stronghold. I don't want to feel like if I disagree with somebody who wants to have a seat with me and discuss district matters or whatever else the matter is, that if I don't agree with them, that their recourse is, well, we're going to go to litigation. That's what I'm saying.
I would suggest to de-escalate the issue when it comes to you, and if it starts that way, so that it doesn't get to litigation and that you are able to have a conversation.
Thank you, thank you, Anna. I appreciate the suggestion.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
My name is Melanie Baker, and I would like to piggyback on the comment made by Bishop Hudson. I am also a representative of a person of faith, and I have sat with Dr. Leon on the very inspiring work that I believe the district has been doing around building safe spaces. And I was very shocked and ashamed to understand on the news that Brentwood is being brought up in charges of racial allegation, as well as allegation of violence against women. And my question is, what is being done to inform the community as a town hall of these matters? as a town hall of these matters that are going on? Because if this is happening behind closed doors, allegedly, at the highest level, then what's happening with our students? And so how are we having those conversations? And as I said, I'm not being abrasive. I genuinely want to know. Because I, you know, I believe as a believer, justice at the top trickles down, and injustice at the top also trickles down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Melanie? Melanie? Hi. Our work continues. As you know, there are many things at the state level right now saying that we should not continue with DEI, right? We have Amanda Chancis. She has an amazing program right now. We have implemented a workshop in every building called Words Matter for our students. We will continue with this work. We're committed to the safety of our students. We want our students to feel safe. And we want them to feel that they can come to us with anything, right? That they need to feel that they belong here and that they're being respected. And we'll continue with that work and with transparency as well. And that's something that we're committed to do here for our kids and our staff as well. And you have my word that anything that we can do to ensure that our students are safe again and that they feel comfortable and happy to come to school, we are going to do that.
Okay.
Madam President, the 30-minute public comment period is over.
Thank you. Okay, we will proceed with all the new business. Wanda?
Okay, so I have some pictures here. I'm going to do something very different that I have done in the past. Because I just wanted you to look at an image and also take a look at a few things that we have done. The first image that you have here, the first picture, you have the Press Cancel Walk that took place on April 5th. It was an amazing event. I'm trying to follow. This is the first time I'm using this. I got it, I got it. You see pictures here. We had Dr. Rebecca Guerilla and also Maria Lopez provide a wonderful presentation. And they were the speakers of the day, and they really inspire all of us. I do want to thank the Plaza Comunitaria Aliasons, Amanda Chancis, also Girls United and their advisors, and every department that volunteer and help in this event, and all the sponsors. A special thank you again to Eileen and also Julie and Cindy for your vision. This happened five years ago. And one great thing that happened at this event was a parent came up to me, and she said, "Because I came here last year, I am alive today." So things that we're doing are really having an impact. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. And please, let's just go up to this. Amanda and Lisa and Paula, they did an amazing job with this as well. Here, we have outstanding commitment of our students here. You have Gabriela Moreta, Saira Quadri, and Isaiah Hayes. They were honored by Town Supervisor Angie Carpenter for their commitment to service. And the students, although they are very young, they're already making a difference. And I want to thank their families for raising such compassionate students. They had an amazing day when they received their award. Here, I think that you already, many of you saw my friend and wonderful student. She's a fifth grader from Southwest. She wrote me a letter, and she said that she wanted to use the baton during gym class. I went to meet with her. She showed me how to use the baton. And when it was time for her to speak to our PR person, she said, "All right, Mr. Tis tried, but she's not quite there yet." But because she has a voice, she has a strong voice, we are going to start a twirling camp for our younger kids. So I just want to thank our students. And as I said before, our students have a voice. And we're going to begin this during the summertime. So our students are exposed to this. Here, we have four of our amazing students representing Brentwood at the Youth and Government Conference in Albany. And they also make history. You have Olivia Harris. She was elected for governor for the 25, 26 school year. She and Mira Sidiki from the freshman campus, they were both selected to attend the conference on national affairs in North Carolina. Mia Blanco, Barahona, and Natalie West. Also, they were honored as outstanding delegates out of more than 800 students. I just want to thank Mr. Scott and their advisors for truly helping the students accomplish what they needed to accomplish that day and what will be accomplished later on as well. I have no doubts that one of these girls is going to become the president and the cabinet as well is, they're getting the cabinet ready. Also here, we have Farah. She was here earlier today, and Wilmer Argueta. They are the recipients of the Simon's STEM Scholars. What that means is it's a very elite program that only 3% or 4% of applicants receive. And they are going to have full tuition pay, including role model and research opportunities. This doesn't really happen often. We're very proud of them. And I would love for you to help me clap because if they're staying this at home, I want them to feel very proud the same way that we are. Okay, here we have our middle schoolers. We have, for the first time, we had the Math Academy Tournament here at Central. And I just wanted to show you these wonderful pictures here, how happy the kids were when they competed against each other. And I want to say thank you to Aaron Maureen and also John LaSalle for making sure that, and the educators, all the math teachers, to, you know, just putting this together and having the kids coming because we want to get them ready for this following competition here. I don't know if you know about Shuraska Jamir, a geometry honors student who from the freshman campus. She earned the bronze medal at the Long Island Math Fair. And she wrote a paper, Astronomy and Mathematics. She explored how math is the language of the universe. I want to thank her teacher, Ms. Luz, for her guidance. And I want to congratulate our wonderful student for getting the bronze medal. And we want to get all the other students that were in the middle school getting them ready for this wonderful fair next school year. So let's go for her. And as you know, we have continued our commitment to bringing culturally diverse meals to our cafeterias. We have pupusas now, jerk chicken, halal meals, empanadas, and even carrot waffles. I have to tell you that I had six pupusas the other day. They were delicious. And I just want to thank the food service workers and the Board of Education for their commitment to this. I didn't know, but they actually make 10,000 breakfasts every day and 13,000 lunches. I cannot even cook one meal. I just don't know how they do all of this. So thank you. I do want to recognize Marlene Solano. She is going to receive the Small Resilience Award. I don't know if any one of you, you don't know her. She has served the Brentwood School District for 20 years. She's an advocate, she's a mentor, and she's also a champion for our children. She has a private practice, but she doesn't stop working. She always has our students in her heart. And I just want you to see her face here. She's wonderful. Okay? And Julie Burgos. She's not here today, but she is going to receive the Outstanding Board Member Service Award from the Nassau County, from the Nassau Sophoc School Board Association. We're very proud of Julia and all the work that she has done. And this is a very well-deserved recognition. And I don't know if you saw this picture, but at the East Kindergarten Center, we have little pollitos. We have little chickens here. Our students had a wonderful time seeing them hatch, right? And they named them. One was Iron Man, the other one was PePito, Pepe, and even Raphael. And these are just wonderful experiences that we are bringing to our students so they really understand and love science and to care for animals as well. They had a great time. More pictures were posted online, and I just want you to see these. Now, this is a video that I want to show you and the impact that our teachers have with our students. This was a student, Katie Reedy. She's a former student from Old Park Elementary. She lives in Westchester right now. And she wanted to paint a mural in her school. And I just want you to hear what she has to say.
Just advance this one.
And not yet? Okay, let's go back to this one because I really want you to hear this. Let me know. Yep. Thank you very much. All right, so let's see. Okay, you worked before. I promise you, you really did. While they're trying to get this ready, I also want to let everyone know that you are going to receive information next week about all of our summer programs. The applications are going to be published soon. We have programs from kindergarten all the way through grade eight for our students and even for our ninth graders. You will see that. We have the autism walk on Saturday. Please come for that. On Monday, I believe, the 28th, we also have a financial literacy workshop. We invite you also to attend that workshop. Yes, the autism walk, yes, on Saturday. Mm-hmm. Is it working? If we can't play, that's fine. One more time, okay? Okay? All right, that's okay. She's just saying she has to come back here. And the reason why she wanted to do this was to ensure that she was giving something back. And this is what our students always want to do. They want to come back to Brentwood. They feel that, she felt that she was very supported by her teacher, Michelle Bodanza. This will be published tomorrow. And I just hope it will send it through primary school so that everyone can actually hear. But I'm very proud of our teachers. That's what I wanted to say. Because of the work that they do, they really have an impact on our students. And 20 years later, she's here, and she wants to give back to the Brentwood community. She's no longer a Brentwood resident, but she wants to come back and do that. So I just want to thank Ms. Bodanza and all the teachers in Brentwood as well.
Thank you, Wanda. So before we close this night, this evening's meeting, I would like to thank my fellow board members, the superintendent of schools, the assistant superintendents, our directors, coordinators, and all staff. We have spent three to five months discussing the upcoming budget vote and the needs and wants of various departments within the Brentwood School District. It is through common purpose and collaboration and partnership that we created a plan to sustain our robust student-driven programs through smart planning and budgeting. We can continue with much-meeted district-wide upgrades and can add new programs or initiatives that help our students thrive. We are truly living through a special era in Brentwood, and I am proud to be part of a team whose focus is on students, families, community, and staff. Everyone should really be proud of themselves for a job well done. And, you know, lastly, I just want to close with saying, you know, we often have individuals who attend board meetings who want to engage in conversations regarding pending lawsuits or openly make statements regarding current litigation. District Council Candace Gomez consistently responds by reminding everyone the district cannot comment as we are in litigation. Please note, by no means is that an admission of guilt. It simply means we will not compromise the integrity of any ongoing lawsuits or litigation or investigations. We would love nothing more than to respond. But please know, the plaintiff has the advantage to come to a board meeting and discuss details of a case while the district is unable to respond. It is really like going into a fight with your hands tied behind your back. Anyone can file a lawsuit, but it doesn't mean the lawsuit is legitimate or that the lawsuit will be successful. The district has handled these situations appropriately, and we trust that the courts will determine the truth. And we respectfully ask the public not to rush to judgment. With that being said, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:13 PM.
Okay.
Motion by Hassan Ahmed. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Maria Malave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still moved? Have a great night, everyone.